But yeah, and how many people signed up to be the parents?
Uh.
Alright.
Thirty five.
But some of them.
Oh.
Okay, I sent them an email. My plan, and I talked about this with the executive at our planning, and I wanna bring Treasure Valley Community College into the, in, as an IACRO member. And I want them to take a look at it first. Take a look at that.
I wasn't paying attention.
Oh, uh, bring TBCC into IACRO. And that gives us access to those more Oregon schools to report. Ontario, Miss, uh, Adrian, what's that? It's around the fall of the year, I don't know. I'm just forget. So, how many people from TBCC showed up, or signed up?
Four.
That's exactly what we wanted, so, good. Alright. Let's, let's go ahead and get started. Uh, welcome everybody to this PNAKAC Town Hall meeting. There are only a few of us here, but they are recording this and they're going to place this on the PNAKAC website. Now, let me read you a quick little blurb about what PNAKAC is. Uh, for some of you, PNAKAC is a new and funny acronym. Uh, it stands for the Pacific Northwest Association for College Admissions Counseling. And it's a not-for-profit organization that serves professionals who work with students as they make the transition from high school to post-secondary education. Uh, PNAKAC is a regional affiliate of NACAC. NACAC is the National Association of College Admissions Counseling. Uh, and they, PNAKAC is, and NACAC are both excellent at promoting the transition from secondary to post-secondary education, and, uh, supporting the professionals, uh, who have that responsibility. So, we're really excited today, we, we, we get to hear from Dan Guthrie, um, from College of Southern Idaho, and Stephen McQ from the College Board. Thanks for being here. Traveled all the way from California. Correct to be here. Well, we're excited to have you here. Glad you're here at the beginning of May instead of the beginning of November. There, there is a slight difference. Between, between the two of.
I didn't see snow flying yesterday as I drove in, but, uh, I've dealt with it.
Well, I'll turn the time over to Dan Guthrie, and, uh, we'll proceed from that, that point. Wonderful, good, thanks Steve, I appreciate it. So, let me put the, uh, presentation back up. Some of you I know, some of you I don't. So, as, you know, we're, we're a relatively small group today, so it'll be conversational. So, you guys are, are welcome to ask questions, raise your hand, talk to me as we go. So, Steve gave a great overview of PNAKAC, and PNAKAC is a great organization. So, PNAKAC is made up of five states. So then, as you can see, Alaska, Oregon, Washington, Idaho, Wyoming, or I mean Montana, excuse me. So, these five states, um, are the affiliate states of PNAKAC, and my role as CSI is an admissions coordinator and recruiter. So, I go around the states of Oregon and Nevada and Idaho, and I recruit students to tell them the benefits going to college, benefits going to community college, and then CSI is that choice. But in my role for PNAKAC, each one of our states has an affiliate in the Government Relations Committee. You know, the Idaho person, right? Because I live in Idaho, and I believe in, uh, Idaho State. So, let's keep moving here. So, the reason that I, I wanna talk to, one of the main things I wanna talk to you guys about is an experience that I've had. So, every year in early March or late February, we have what's called the NACAC advocacy meeting, or we call it Day on the Hill. So, you go to Washington DC, you stay at Western Georgetown, it's, it, it's a beautiful part of the city, where you receive some great training. It's a quick weekend, Sunday, Monday, and then you're home. Um, if any of you are interested in this, let me know, and we can talk about it, uh, in depth a little bit. And I'm gonna go into what I learned and what I saw while I was there. That's the room we were in, how fancy, right? Uh, they asked for a volunteer, and you go right behind one of those pillars real quick. So, uh, it's, it, it, it's a great opportunity, but, you know, it's a great way to learn about where NACAC is, state by state. You know, at this advocacy training, a lot of the other NACAC advocates were there. Wisconsin, Texas, international NACAC. So, we were all kinda comparing notes, you know, and the first thing we do is Mike Rose and the current NACAC president, they come out, they give, uh, some updates on what's been going on, budgetary, budget restraints, budget, uh, requests, things like that, through the Department of Education, and then we start talking about policies. So, we have representatives from the current administration, from the Department of Education, come into the room and talk to us. And it's, it's pretty interesting, you know, usually you hear about a full day of training on a Sunday, and you're just thinking, this is gonna be pretty dry. You know, there's other things I can do, and these are training topics that we all pretty much love, you know? These are the things that really get us excited, talking about, you know, DACA and all these things that some people might, uh, snooze off on, right? These are the things that really light us up. So, during the updates and the training, we also learn about the NACAC stances. NACAC is great, because NACAC's great about taking stances. When, you know, DACA was rescinded, or the attempt to, immediately, NACAC and PNAKAC were out there putting the stance out there. You know, there's, uh, I just received an email from Mike Rose, who is the NACAC Government Relations boss, basically. You know, he, uh, Senator Durbin from Illinois just put out some information, there's always something going on. But, most important, and the reason we were there, it was for our government relations, uh, government relations training. So, what we were doing is learning how to speak with our congressmen, speak with their aides, speak with their staff about exactly what issues we wanted to go into. So, the main thing I took away from that training was the way to do the meeting. So, you schedule the meeting, you know, you have to reach out to them early, and then you go on the hill and talk to these guys. And while you're in your meeting, you have to be brief, you have to explain exactly how it affects you, the issue you're talking about. You have to explain how it's gonna affect your students back in Idaho, and then you have to leave with an ask. That's a term that you're gonna hear a couple of times during the presentation, leave with an ask. So, you ask the congressman for something, you ask their aide for something, and then you follow up. So, the team that was on the hill was myself, that's me, obviously, look at that guy. So, um, and then three college coun, or high school counselors from the state of Idaho, Robbie Cups, who is the current outgoing, uh, past president of PNAKAC. We have Mallory Esmond from Skyview, and then we have Chelsea Dogger, who is brand new to the industry from Meridian High School. And, uh, what we did was, you know, it's a day on the hill, and it feels that way. You know, if you've ever been to DC, it feels like you're going uphill all day long, you know, uphill this way, uphill that way. And it, it really felt that way, you know? For the first couple of meetings, we're in the senate buildings, which, it's just like this, you know, as I'm facing the Capitol, senate buildings are on this side, house offices are on this side. So, we started over in the senate offices and talked to Senator Risch, and, uh, Craypool? I, I don't know why I forgot that name, I've known it for years. And then, uh, when we were done with those, we crossed the hill, got that picture. It, it's amazing, the picture was taken, it was very windy, and, uh, you can see that a little bit with Chelsea, but, uh, we're, we're professionals. So, uh, then we went over to the house and met with, uh, Mike Simpson's office, and then also Russ Volter, who's brand new. Russ Volter is a great advocate for education in one of the states, is from, uh, College of Western Idaho, former, uh, former teacher, and, uh, great advocate for that. So, let's lean on him, he's brand new, you know, let's train him up a little bit. So, it, it's a great experience, and you guys can have this experience. These guys are on scholarship, you know, these guys came from Treasure Valley, they weren't selected just because they're from Treasure Valley. That is out there a lot about Idaho, you know, like it's Boise and everyone else, but let's, let's try and make sure you guys are at this apply when you go for the next year. Let me jump on my notes here. Keep going, so, uh, yeah, so this is Monday. So, the advocacy training, you fly in on Saturday, you try to get there as early as you can, but going west east, you don't get there that early, right? Um, Sunday, it's a full day of training, Monday, you're on the hill, we run our airplanes by four. So, uh, back at work Tuesday. So, if you're worried about a time constraint, don't worry about that part, we move quick, you know, but we still have some time to unwind during that thing as well. So, here's what we talked about, when, uh, Mallory and Robbie and Chelsea and I sat down, decided, we'll be wanting to talk to our congress, congressman about, I can say congressman because they're all tall men. So, these are the things we came up with, so the issues we wanted to discuss. First of all, protecting our students. Uh, we've got to really protect the students, uh, they're making a lot of decisions right now, and then a lot of decisions are being made for them. But at the higher levels, we gotta make sure that protection is in place, there's only so much we can do, right? Uh, permanent solution to DAPA, it's near and dear to our hearts, and it always will be. Uh, and I'm gonna get a little bit more into that about that. Fully Funding Higher Education Act, Higher Ed ATA, Title IV Part A, now we're, now it's, we're sounding like a government presentation, right? So, um, this is where a lot of our funding comes from, and I'll get into that. Financial aid, FAFSA, Pell Grant, the things that, you know, a lot of those students really rely on, it's important to them, and then of course student council ratio. How can you or high school counselors, I haven't met you all, so, uh, more work directly, but you, you'll understand what I'm talking about that. So, the first, of course, is protecting our students, look at this great picture I found at ISU, this is some students from Eastern Idaho. Um, so, the, the protecting our students, like I said, it, it's important for us to keep these protections in place, and... I'm just going with my notes, excuse me. So, um, so these guys are making large decisions that are impacting their lives forever. You know, we can protect these guys, these students to a point, but not forever, right? There's a lot of things going on, a lot of advertisements on a lot of schools, they see every school, that's a school, right? So, that's where we got into immediately, predatory schools, that's what they're called. Through NACAC, some people call them for-profit, that's not what I call them, I call them predatory because of their tactics. And, uh, and that's something I'll always do. So, you know, their tactics are always, I'm a college recruiter, it's one of my passions, and I don't use the same tactics, you know? So, I'm not, uh, recruiting, you know, single mothers, I'm not recruiting, I am, but, you know, not in the same way. So, the tactics are very, um, they're just unnecessary. And the thing we talked to legislators about, you know, first of all, was gainful employment. Gainful employment, if you're not familiar with it, is your technical programs and a lot of your other programs have to have a certain amount of employment, uh, success. And during the past administration, the present, or the one we have now, they put some gainful employment, uh, requirements into place that really stunned these for-profit schools, right? A lot of them went under, ITT went under, a couple of the other ones did, and the reason for that is because their programs weren't viable. But the current administration has rolled back those requirements, and now, uh, they have access to all of the financial aid and all of the other money that's out there, without proving that, uh, you know, proving that these degrees are, are viable, and they can get a job for sure. So, uh, though, that goes into loan default, right? So, let's talk about loan default. So, with the predatory schools, about fifty-six percent of their students default within the first five to six years, and, and they don't have a job afterwards, because they're, they don't have a viable, uh, way to pay for it, right? On average, community college, about twenty-six percent of the students, uh, default on their loans. But, it's a whole different ballgame, you know, and I'll get into that here in a second. You know, but you see that term out there, ninety-ten, ninety-ten, that means that a school can have ninety percent of their funding comes from government, and then ten percent from somewhere else. We would like to see eighty-five fifteen, I'd like to see eighty-twenty, right? If you're running a school and you can't survive off of ten percent of your funds coming from other sources, I don't think you're viable, you've probably got a lot divorced, right? So, that's another thing we, we were asking the congressman about. So, um, tuition, so, you know, we have a local predatory school in this area, you know, they're tuitioning for years right around sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. You will buy us about eight thousand dollars, and then CSI thirty-four hundred dollars a year, right? So, when these guys are defaulting on loans, you know, let's say you're a two-year student, you default on, you know, a three thousand dollar loan, that's something, you know, you might be able to mop up, but you're, we're talking about sixteen thousand five hundred, eighteen thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars debt, you don't have a job to pay that back, right? Because you default on these loans, and now your credit is shot, and you don't have an education, and you've used up all of your lifetime eligibility with FAFSA, you're in a real pinch, right? So, um, when your students are looking at schools, you gotta make sure that they're looking at, uh, regionally accredited schools, such as CSI, ISU, College of Eastern Idaho, or running favorites, right? So, uh, and, and it all comes down to quality, you know, usually the standards aren't in place to provide an education. Standards are in place to catch a check, right? So, even when they do graduate, they get out there with that degree, a lot of employers aren't looking at it as something to hire with, right? And, uh, and build these people up, and then, you know, transferability, I remember when ITT went under, I was getting two or three calls a day per month, you know, will these credits transfer into CSI? Absolutely not. You know, you've got a piece of paper, they're basically a blank piece of paper right now that costs you twenty grand. So, with that, going into the congressional meeting, the ask on this was, let's get those gainful employment re, uh, recommendations back in place. Let's get the loans to fall down sometime, you know, let's hit a ninety-ten, let's talk about eighty-five fifteen. You know, eighty-twenty would be my perfect thing, but eighty-five fifteen is, is pretty fair. And we want them to support, you know, our views on that as higher education, um, and high school counselors. Just turning the page here, so... So, let's talk about permanent NACAC solution, you guys are familiar with DACA, but I'm gonna bring you up to speed a little bit. So, DACA was an executive order from two thousand twelve from President Obama. Um, and it's deferred action for childhood arrivals, right? I've got the acronym down. So, you know, these are students that were brought to the US under, um, you know, under pretenses that some people call illegal, but, uh, they're kids, right? So, they're here, and they're stars, right? I don't know if you guys work with DACA students, I do, they're the best, right? Uh, uh, more often than not, you know, pretty often we have, uh, DACA students in our schools, and there are four-point-os, there are senior class presidents, they're giving the speeches. And DACA is a way to protect these students so they aren't deported immediately, uh, before what's called illegal status. So, you know, these guys put their name on a list, and with no, no guarantee of success or anything else, they put in all the work, right? They do all the work, they bust it out, and then they graduate, and now they're under, uh, the constant fear of being deported. And then we also have what's called the Dream Act. So, Dream Act is something that's in, uh, the Congress as we speak, you know, they're working on it, and what that would do is provide a path to citizenship for, for residents who come into our, uh, country and our state illegally. I guess that's the term that people use these days, it doesn't fit, but it's the one that works. So, let's talk about, you know, DACA students, you know, na, on the national scale, there's six hundred ninety thousand DACA students in the United States. You know, these are six hundred ninety thousand of the bravest people you'll ever meet, because they put their name down, and at any given time, they could just be snatched up and taken away to a place they've never even seen. Imagine being two years old, you were raised in Idaho forever, and then one day they put you in downtown Detroit, what are you gonna do? You're not gonna like it, right? And they're going to be sent back to places where they're probably not wanted, and, uh, they probably don't fit. So, we've really gotta remember that. Um, in Idaho, we have over three thousand DACA students, right? So, it's not as many as six hundred ninety thousand. I remember the first DACA student I met, I was at Hispanic Youth Symposium, if you guys have never attended that, it's great, it's every year in Boise, we had a CSI one year. So, I met this young lady, she was freaking out, if, what I call freaking out, right? And, uh, she's like, am I gonna be able to go to college? I'm like, well, tell me about yourself. She's like, well, I have a four-point-two, which, I don't even know how you did that, she must be, you know? And she's just so brilliant, involved in everything, and she's a part of DACA student, and I can't get funding to go to school. So, she's talking to me about this, this is the young lady who should be a point out, right? And, uh, so we brought her on board at CSI. A lot of our community colleges here in Idaho, we have programs and scholarships and things that will, you know, get these guys tuition and everything, and she came, and she's been absolutely stellar. But, uh, she was under the impression that she worked so hard, got four-point-two, was involved with everything, and then wasn't be, going to be able to go to college. She was going to have to go work in the fast food industry or something like that, but that size of a brain, she could barely walk through the door, right? So, um, this is when DACA really got on my radar, and it'll be there forever. Um, so, especially in Idaho, you know, it's, it's no secret that a lot of our population, you know, we've got migrant populations, we have, you know, a lot of rural and farm populations, and these are the students that we are going to be, uh, we are going to be working with a lot. So, you guys are high school counselors, are any of you? Okay, what, what, what do you do?
I'm a college and career advisor.
College and career advisor, at what school?
At Thunder Ridge in Idaho.
Brand new school, cool. Still smells that way too, I bet. So, no, they fixed that a pretty quick. So, um, at Thunder Ridge, how often are you dealing with this situation, DACA students, and do they self-report it, or what are, what are we talking about?
Twenty-three percent of our students identify as like Hispanic or Latino.
Okay.
And we're still identifying the number that is less DACA and more undocumented, period.
Okay.
A dating issue, we just want your name.
Yeah, absolutely, and they're, you know, they're nervous because they can't fill out a FAFSA. And they're nervous because at any given time, you know, someone walks in a room, and he's a stranger, and they're like, that might be a nice person, I like you, right? Or they go home, and their dad's not home, and for all they know, he's gone, right? So, um, this is one of the asks, you know, let's talk about impact. Monetarily, you know, six hundred ninety thousand DACA recipients, or, you know, undocumented, I've got the numbers here, um, over, they add forty-two billion dollars to our GDP every year. DACA students in the state, or DACA recipients in the state of Idaho have added over six million dollars to our state and local tax revenue. That's a big money, right? Think about the six million dollars to do in, even a, a tenth of that in your budgets, wouldn't it be great, you know? Um, then the undocumented side of the Dream Act, uh, we've got thirty million dollars that undocumented residents have put into our taxes, and, uh, if they were onto a path for citizenship, it would be thirty-five million. I know, jumping from thirty to thirty-five, that's a pretty quick jump, but talking about five million dollars, you know? Um, I've never seen that, and, uh, I would like to, but, you know, when it gets into budgets and things like that, when we're coming up short at school, there's five million bucks right there, right? So, let's, let's work on this. So, the ask that we left with the congresspeople for this is, fully support the DACA students, back them up, stand up for them. The Dream Act, back it up, a hundred percent. We're asking you this as college representatives and high school representatives, and the impact isn't just monetarily. When you deport students, DACA suits, you're deporting inspiration, right? You're deporting intelligence, you're deporting students that work hard for no payoff, right? Usually, I'll talk to students, and they're like, what's in it for me? I've never really had that with a DACA student, they're in, this is to just fill their brain. And, uh, if we start losing out on inspiration and intelligence from our young people, we're gonna be in real rough shape when those of us are in rocking chairs, right? So, uh, let's, let's really work on this. So, fully funding the ATA, so how many of you are familiar with the Higher Education Act? It's been around for a long time. So, the first, I mean, the fir, the president who put this into place was Lyndon Johnson, so he's been gone for a while, right? So, um, ATA, you know, put it in place in nineteen sixty-five, provides higher ed access to America's high school students. It's where a lot of our funding comes from, you know, Title IV Part A. This is where our grants live, this is where our funding lives, high school to higher ed transition, you know, uh, the Pell Grant lives in here. And it's never gonna be authorized, it was up for reauthorization in two thousand thirteen, and we're still working on it, you know, it's two thousand nineteen, we're talking about six years since then. Nineteen sixty-five was a long time ago, right? Fifty-something years now, according to the math. So, um, you know, we wanna make sure that these are funding, especially in a state like Idaho, where, or in the Pacific Northwest, where a lot of our students don't go to college just because of the money, which is a shame, right? We want to make sure the money's out there. So, half of these grants, half of the funding, high school to higher ed transition, you know, the two, there's two great organizations that are pretty near and dear to my heart. I believe in them quite a bit, one's called Trio, and one's called GEAR Up, right? Um, we've all dealt with them. How many students that we know, or are friends even, wouldn't even went to college if it wasn't for Trio, wasn't for GEAR Up, right? Trio lives right here at ISU, don't they? And, uh, the past two budgets, um, when the recommendations came out, they recommended a hundred percent budget cut on both Trio and GEAR Up, to dump the money into something else. And then it goes back to the congresspeople, and they fight for it. But we have to be out there fighting for it, can you believe that? We have to fight for Trio and GEAR Up, you know? We've got students, you know, we have a state that drops into the, you know, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, um, in rank, in a lot of different go-on rates, a lot of different diploma rates, a lot of different graduation rates, and we're talking about the, for Trio, GEAR Up, you know? So, but that was one, that was the big ask, when we went to the congressman and asked, you know, when Title IV Part A comes up, when the ATA comes up, you have to back this up, you know, you have to be an advocate for the funding of Trio. You know, and I asked them, come to our schools, go to, you know, not just Boise High or anything like that, go to, I heard you guys mentioned Showband, stop at Showband, see what it's like, these kids are absolutely brilliant. Go to Learn Talk, go to Magic Valley High School, see the schools where Trio and GEAR Up push these kids into the next level of education and, uh, lifestyle. So, that was the big ask when we were talking about ATA. FAFSA, fun, right? So, uh, it's the best part of college and high school and the worst part, right? Because you can get in front of the kids and say, you're brilliant, you're gonna go to school, we're gonna make sure that it's paid for. You know, that's the, I can, I always call it the application you fill out for, you know, to get access to the money that the government's invested in the future. That's what the U of future, my investment is, is milked, right? So, uh, they put their money in me, and it's paid off somewhat. So, um, we want simplification, so they'll do the work with FAFSA, we all do, pretty much, right? Um, when you hear a student getting verified, and verification, I don't know how they get, but they pick a lot, right? At, uh, one of my favorite schools in the whole state is called Bertha, they have fifteen seniors, fifteen verifications, and, uh, I don't know why, but they did. And something I've done at the advocacy meeting, I've been in higher ed for over four years, you'd think I would've known that. So, when a student is verified, they're just verified by the school, and then if they apply to five schools, they can be verified five times. So, on Tuesday, a kid can get a call from ISU, I need this, this, and this, and on Thursday, they get a call from CSI, I need the exact three, same three things. And, uh, they'll be like, no, I sent it, like, no, you sent it to ISU, now you have to send it to CSI, and then on Friday, you'll have to send it to U of I, and so on. So, the simplification we were talking about is just trying to find a funnel that you put everything in on one end, and it comes out to everyone on the back end. It's, it, it's very important, there's, I've seen families that have been frustrated by the FAFSA, just threw their hands up and gave up. They, you know, they're like, we're a first generation, we weren't supposed to be here in the first place, and now it's been proven, right? The IRS is breathing down our necks, let's just give up. And they give up, and then the student doesn't go to school. So, you know, with that verification, you know, we're talking about Pell Grant increases, well, Pell Grant is pretty nice right now, six thousand twenty dollars. That sounds like a, quite a significant amount, that's a full Pell, right? Do I have my number right? I imagine it's right in there, six thousand twenty, six thousand one hundred, but, you know, that's great if you come to CSI and your tuition is thirty-four hundred dollars. You know, but not everyone knows the CSI, they should, right? They could, but, uh, but they don't. But, uh, you know, if you go to U of I, you know, uh, the walk-in-the-door price is eight thousand four hundred dollars for tuition. Your Pell Grant just took care of that, minus twenty-four hundred, but gotta live somewhere, right? You've gotta have your books and everything, so these guys are, you know, Pell Grant's taking care of about, I don't know, a third maybe? You know, and if you're a fully Pell eligible student, you probably don't have that extra ten thousand dollars sitting around to cut a check, and then you're, you're guaranteed to go into debt. So, uh, we want that to increase, the, if Pell Grant has an increase with the price of tuition raises, um, or the pri, or the inflation rate. So, we really wanna see an increase on that. And then just overall simplification, you know, every year, October first, we do our, you know, we do FAFSA nights, and we do all of these great things, and each one is different. So, we wanna see some simplification whereby, so, um, the ask on this was, you know, to really, for the congressman to really dig down and come from a place, you know, that, uh, in Idaho, a lot of our students are relying on the FAFSA, right? And we have some of the best educational opportunities in the country, right here in our state, I'm standing here, honest to speak. And, uh, some kids just aren't able to go to the level of education that they deserve because the money's out there, what a shame, right? You know, money. So, um, we asked them for, you know, a simplification of FAFSA, whatever that may mean, and then maybe we can get together and work on that, what that might mean to you guys. So, student council ratios, I left this one for last because it's so important, it is, it's, it's an amazing, amazing thing when I learned about this. It blew my eyes wide open, you know? So, the first point of contact for any high school student is... So the first point of contact for any high school student is the counselor. You do college and career, you know exactly what I'm talking about. Sometimes it looks like a room like that, right? But, um, oftentimes it doesn't. So, you know, you're trying to get all of this information into the students' heads, you know, application, funding to lay to all of this, and you're trying to do it to everyone. How many seniors you have?
We only have two hundreds this year.
Two hundreds, a lot though, right? So, you know, we've got some big schools in Idaho, Rocky Mountain and Mountain Dew, they have five hundred fifty seniors this year. So, um, I love going to those schools because I can see a lot of kids, but, uh, it's tough to give to them. So let me get onto my correct notes here. So, you know, stu-, uh, school populations, they're increasing. The importance of college being stressed hard by the state board and everyone else, but we've gotta have people on the ground to help out. So, take a look at the, the numbers, you know? Let's take a look at the ratio. So the recommended ratio is set by NACAC and the HDA, the, uh, American Counselors Association. I hope I had that correct. So, recommended ratio is about two hundred fifty to one, right? The national average, four hundred eighty-two to one. Well, that's a gap, isn't it, right? So, there's three states that are in the recommended ratio, forty-seven that aren't. The states that are are Nambur, Wyoming, Vermont, and New Hampshire. What do all those have in common? Low populations, right? And, uh, that's what it goes into. Look at Arizona, nine hundred twenty-four to one. That means if they have a school with two thousand students, they have two counselors. That doesn't work, right? You can't get to everyone, and a lot of people fall through the cracks. So I do have some takeaways for you guys, pass them around. One of each, um, it shows each state and then the state that we love the most, right? Which is Idaho, our counselor student rank right now is six hundred ten. Uh, nowhere near the national average. And those of you that work with high school students, you can feel this, right? Um, even when, you know, you've got two hundred seniors, it's still quite a bit. So, what we really wanna do is get, I mean, we've gotta get this number down, and we've gotta figure it out. And the way to do that, you know, at the smaller schools, is really not a problem. I go see Kim Rais in Merit Town, she's got fifteen seniors, no problem, right? I go see Ray Petley at Rocky Mountain, five hundred fifty seniors. He's trying to see every one of them two or three times throughout the year. It's just not gonna work, right? Wouldn't you at, uh, Thunder Ridge, you'd like some help, right? I'm sure.
We actually have three good.
So you're, you're a good, you're a good story then. So what's your staff look like?
Well, this year, we have three counselors and two college and career counselors with fourteen hundred students. And next year will be about fifteen fifty, and we'll have four college counselors and two college and career counselors.
Okay, I'll remember all that. So when I'm talking about this, I'll use you guys as an example of, uh, what the good stuff looks like, right? So, um, we've got that going on. But, you know, with this kind of makeup, it ends up that high school counselors and college and career counselors are only spending about twenty-one percent of their time talking to students about college and career preparation, which, uh, it should be quite a bit more, right? So, what, and where it comes in is kinda like the Thunder Ridge example, is, you know, you gotta put as many people into the mix as possible. And, uh, the ask on this one was funding, right? I mean, if you're gonna ask for something, ask for money, you know, because maybe you'll get it. And it's, that's what it all runs on, right? So, but not just money for counselors and salaries, but training, materials, you know? Um, we, we, I've gone to some great conferences, and oftentimes I don't see representation of high school counselors like I like to see because they can't afford it. Who'd go to Boston, right? I did, but, uh, there wasn't a lot of high school counselors out there. You know, we had NACAC in Salt Lake this past year, hopefully some of you made it. It was great, but DACA is spending too, you know? So, we've gotta get that money out there, and NACAC is good about scholarships and things like that, but we wanna really wanna, you know, we wanna make sure that you guys are involved. So the ask of the congressman was, uh, funding and, uh, just visibility. So, these are some of the asks that we took to the, uh, senators and the House representative members of Idaho. You know, reinstate our gainful employment regulations, protect our students. You know, you've got a school rolling in with, hey, free iPad, so-and-so. I had a student in Boise tell me that they were going to a technical school in Sacramento. It's gonna cost them a hundred thousand dollars to get an automotive degree. I've got that at CSI, three grand, right? With scholarships and Pell. That guy could've turned his degree into a moneymaker. Instead, he's gonna be an auto mechanic that's never going to be out of debt, welcome to America, right? So, um, it, it's something like that. This person was able to get to the school and talk to this kid. So we've really gotta make sure that that doesn't happen. Those protections have to be in place. Permanent DACA solution and full support on Dream Act. It, it's not political, it's government, it's philosophical. You know, I wanted to stress that at the beginning, I forgot that, you know, there's a difference between politics and government. What we're working with here is government, right? Um, it may sound political at times, but it's not. These are things that we really need. They control the money, we control them, we've gotta go out and talk to these guys. Fully funding HDA Title IV Part A, we've gotta keep our Pell Grant. We have to keep Trio and GEAR Up. When I saw that they were recommended for the slash, I was stunned, my jaw hit the floor, right? And, uh, they will probably GEAR Up for that again. You know, education over the last couple of years in the current administration has, uh, taken some hits, right? And they're always on the board for cuts. So we really want our congressman to understand that, uh, we're behind this. FAFSA simplification of Pell Grant increase, very important. You know, we want the barrier, the number one barrier to college is money, right? These kids we work with are smart. You don't have to be super smart to go to college, right? I went, so, uh, so think about that. So, but money is real, right? I can't pep talk money away. I can tell a kid they're smart all day and show them a pathway, but I can't give them the ten thousand or thirty thousand or whatever. So we need that FAFSA to be simplified for people, especially first generation who've never done it before. Pell Grant increase, you know? Uh, when you see an EFC of zero, and then the kids still can't go to the school that they deserve to go to? Let's try and find that balance, right? And then increase funding to, I use some trees for us in the app. Increase funding to increase counselor numbers and training, you know? We wanna get you guys some help. Uh, we wanna get us some help. There's times where there's high schools that I can't do any other visit than lunchtime because they can't let the kids out, you know? And I go to lunch, and I get to watch them eat, and I get to get back to my car, right? And, uh, that's, that's it, that's my job, and I love it, right? Some of them get a sticker out of the dealer or ten, and, uh, it, and it's great. But I wanna be able to get in there and really work with some of these students. You know, we've got a great, uh, program here in Idaho, I don't know if you have it, in this side of the state, it's called Avid. And Avid, um, there's days where I'll be in a classroom all seven periods giving the, giving my presentation, and I love it. Uh, in the, right, first thing in the morning, I don't. But, uh, by the end of it, it, it's great, you know? Because I can get thirty at a time all day, you know? And, uh, that's what the classes are for. So we need that funding increase, so all schools can have Avid, Trio, GEAR Up, things like that. So that's our summary of that. So what can we do, right? We're just in Idaho, small population, we take giant potatoes, turn them into a hotel, right? And, uh, that's what we get known for in the news. But we're important, right? We, we're one of the states that thrives in the Northwest. Uh, we may be low on some of these, uh, these indicators, but there's things we can do, ways we can be involved. First up, sign up for, sign up for the NACAC Government Relations newsletter. It comes once every couple of weeks, and it's very informative, very easy to read. If Mike Rose sends two, you'll get a third email apologizing. If he sends two emails in one day, he's that, uh, he's that professional, which I love, you know, one of the things I like. But I read this, every time it comes out, and it's amazing to see the things that are going on in Michigan and Florida and California, they affect Idaho, right? Because we're, we may be smaller, but we're cross-sections. One of the things I love about America the most is we're fifty little countries combined into one, right? And things that affect all of them affect us as well. So read the newsletter, look at it, stay informed. You hear someone talking about, you know, an uninformed view on, uh, higher education, you can jump in there and help them out. Answer the calls to action. Oftentimes, when there's a big thing going on, DACA or anything like that, uh, there's calls to action that NACAC and the NACAC will send out. They're so easy, you can't even believe that you did something. They hit your inbox, and you click on the link, and then the letter's written for you. You affix your name to it, and it goes to all of your congresspeople. And then you get emails back, thank you for reaching out. And you could do these all day, and I'm gonna show you that here in a minute. Right and call your congressmembers. You know, it might not feel like they're listening, but their aides and their, um, staff are so professional, and they trust them at the highest level. So if you're talking to someone on the phone, like, you know, tell them what you like, what you don't like, it will get into that congressperson's hand, they will take it into consideration. And, uh, the, you know, we're in an environment sometimes where it feels like they don't, but they do. I've been assured and I believe them, so. And then apply for the scholarship to come to Advocacy Day. Jump on the plane, come out to DC, get some steps in, and you'll learn some great information. You'll get to meet with the congresspeople right in their offices, which I was, I was pretty amazed by, you know, the access. And, uh, those are some of the things you can do. But all politics, and here I'm talking about politics, but politics and government's global, right? So, at the Pocatello level, at the county level, at the state level, you know, at the national level, let's, let's, let's talk to these guys. Let's really get the word out and let them know that, uh, we are interested. Here's some of your great resources. NACACnet.org, that's the NACAC website, I'm gonna pull it up here in a minute and show you guys. Uh, PNACT.org, this is Twitter, at NACAClong. So anything that's going on in the government relations on Twitter, there you go. Mike Rose, he's the, um, NACAC Government Relations person. PNACTAC has a new Government Relations chair with Mike Sacks for many years. The new person, he hasn't officially taken office yet. I'll give you that information when it comes in, then myself, of course. I'm the Idaho person, I'll get you my information, uh, down at CSI, email me, call me up. Phone calls, go, you know, if you leave me a voicemail, there's my email, so I don't have that excuse of, I didn't get the message right, I got it. So, um, I, and I will get back to you because this stuff is very important to me. High school students in higher education are very important to me. High school counselors and admissions people are very important to me, and I'm always there to help them out in any way, right? So, these are some of the resources. Let me show the website real quick. I don't know if I'm going over on time, I think I'm okay. There's been the next question. So, let me take a look at this website. This is the NACAC.net, NACACnet.org. So on here, you know, you can go down here to your advocacy and, uh, ethics page, and there you go. There's your take action, policy initiatives, advocacy letters. I mean, click right on there, and you can read about everything that we believe in. At NACAC, at PNACTAC, and then you can do your calls to action. I mean, it's written out even in a way that, you know, myself, and I can understand it and enjoy it, you know? You can see, you know, the financial aid curriculum, mobility and documentation, these are the things that are important in Idaho. They're important nationwide as well. So let me jump back on this slide, I just wanted to show you how easy it was. And then, uh, here's the PNACTAC logo again. What kind of questions do we have while I'm here?
I, um, I'm supportive of course of all our Hispanic students and our DACA students. Um, I work at Highland, I don't see our native students going on college and training in a way that I'd like. And I wonder what efforts are being made.
That, that's interesting. Um, I know that we have the, uh, the educational, you know, the Indian Education Summit, uh, every year. And I went last year, and we talked about that, Steve, you've attended that before, um.
Joanna Jones from the state of Indiana.
Okay, 'cause I've known a lot about that. It's, um, I have gone to, you know, some of the Native American heavy parks, you know, in Nevada, Madera, OYD. And a lot of it seems to be cultural. They don't wanna get too far away from their family, and there isn't a college in Madera, right? Or OYD, or, you know, some of the other places. But, um, what do you see as barriers to, what, what's stopping them from going on?
I think, um, I think there are a number of things. I think, um, family and culture is one. I think, um, and, you know, we would have to ask them, I need your native students to always feel embraced and welcomed in higher ed in a way that feels to them authentic. We don't have a native college that's close enough by.
That's true.
Um, but, but the hand culture is, um, is important. Um, so I don't know, um, you know, part of that's on us. I think maybe you should start sooner and we've got more to them. As soon as they get to high school, let them know what their opportunities are. I don't know, you know, do you really get their reading learning, they think, I don't know. I don't flush, I don't need to go to college, right? Which is, you know, developmentally appropriate, when you're reading, you're like, woo!
So what kind of money are we talking about, what do they get?
I think it's, um, right, right.
Yeah, and it, the thing with that, you know, it's such a slippery slope to, to, uh, try and reach out to a student and make them feel, you know, special. It's like walking to a kid's center, you adapt a student, like, you're fired, right? So, um, so with.
You're insulting.
Exactly, so you gotta find that fine line between, we wanna make sure that you're getting the resources you need, but I don't want to, uh.
But in the same way, a rising tide lifts all boats. If more of our native students are in education and training, you know?
Yeah. That's something I've learned, my best recruiter is a CSI student, right? I can talk all day, but what do I know? You know, and, uh, a CSI student knows what it felt like to be in class that. Let me, Steve, go ahead.
Well, there are a couple of pretty good examples across the state that have aimed to specifically help our native students go on to school. I mean, and Casey can talk about that too, you've had some good experience. But there's the, the recent legislation that dropped the per credit to sixty-five dollars per credit for a, a, a student that's registered with an Idaho tribe, which is awesome.
Which is here though, right? Or across the state? Just at ISU or across the state?
Across the state.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all across the state.
Yeah.
So that's amazing.
No, it is.
Um, but, you know, it is, it is not enough because it's, there, there are multiple issues, right, that are going on. The other example that I can think of, the state where they have really taken a bull by the horns and just decided to attack this aggressively. Um, the University of Idaho has a Native American Institute. And it is, it is a fraternity, sorority all in unto itself. And it's a community where they embrace all members of the native, um, of, of native descent. And so it is, I mean, it's, it's really incredible. If you go ahead and look at their numbers, since opening up their Native American Student Center, you can see the enrollment of Native American students just go up because it's the family and friends, it's the culture. It's all packaged and it's carried there. And, and that would be, in, in my opinion, it's that type of resource center that is needed in, at each of the institutions across the state. Just like there's a veterans center, just like there is, you know, I mean, we need to have these special population centers so that people feel supported, they feel loved, they, they have that network in which they feel comfortable. But, but there are, there are some examples. It, it is, it is kinda challenging. I mean, I mean, working with students in Showban, just really smart, wonderful students, but they've had no expectation of going to college.
Well, it's really challenging because if you think about tribal leaders, they were a part of, before they had to go with families and where they were told to cut their hair, and they can't talk the same way that they did. And so they were really hesitant, a lot of tribal leaders, because they've had such negative experiences with education and what, what happened to them and how it was demoralizing. And so, and our particular, in our particular tribes, Shojon and Bannet, there's not a call higher up to tell students to go. Um, there's not a lot of support from the community, and so it's these small programs and resources.
So.
That, you know, but they have, there's funding there. They get a six thousand dollar or more scholarship from the tribe for going. They can get a Pell Grant. So there is substantial funding, um, to help students go often, but it's, I, it, there's a lot of barriers for them to cross over.
And so they're basically, I mean, I probably don't answer, they're basically graduating and just going into the community, um, or.
Yeah, I, I just, um, it's just not the participation or the engagement. I don't think you, you, like the expectation, you know? It's so, again, it's not expected, and I don't, I, again, I'm not trying to get in august here, but so many Hispanic kids are driven, you know? They want, they, they want it so bad, they don't want to be Native kids. It's not that they're not bright and capable and, you know?
Sure.
But anyways, it's like you said, it's a resource, it's a, it's a state resource, and they have so much to offer.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think deserve our, our state and educational support. And I just don't see it, I don't see them realizing it, or like that.
Okay.
So anyway, that's, that's out there.
That was probably the best part of the presentation. You know, with your question, I, I appreciate that, now it's on my mind. So, um, you know, I attend the thing in Nevada every year. Barrett puts it on there, the mining. Barrett puts it on there, the mining company, and all of the tribal students from northern Nevada are able to come to Great Basin College, and there's a college fair, and they pay for everything. They hook me up in a hotel, pay for all my meals, they take care of it, and, uh, you know, oftentimes it's myself and ISU and their representative from Boise State, that's all we see, you know? I'd like to get everyone involved, you know? So, if we could do something like that in Idaho.
I think Trio is, um, is, is a, is a link, because I see our kind of college certified, I have them, we share space with Trio. So we see, so I see the native kids coming in as recruited by Trio in ninth grade and tenth grade, and then they don't persist, it's fascinating.
Definitely build that foundation. Trio, one thing I know about Trio is they bring kids to campus. You know, if you can put their feet on the ground and put their eyes on the campus, you know, think about a campus that looks like this, it's, uh, so on, it's not what they look like, you know? A lot of kids, they don't like high school, they're thinking, I'm not going to thirteenth grade. You're not, right? College is a complete one-eighty, and, uh, it's completely different than high school. And that's one thing when, you know, I hear about funding for Trio and here at the slash, it freaks me out because, you know, I love when these buses show up, you know, they're like, is it okay if we bring two hundred students? Absolutely, bring a thousand, you know? Um, we'll make it work, so, you know, but, uh, because then their eyes start opening, they're like, this is what college looks like. It doesn't look like on TV, six hundred people in a class, you know, frat boys jumping out of windows all day long. No, it's, it's just what it looks like on a cartoon, you know? So, um, with these programs, we wanna make sure that, uh, they stay funded so we can see them. What other questions you could go for it?
So I'm curious about advocacy efforts within the state of Idaho. So does NACAC do anything within the state and advocate with our local legislators?
We haven't yet, that's something I wanna work on for this coming year. We have a short session, right? Three-month session, you gotta get in there, and you gotta get in there quick, it's over now. So, this coming year, and I'll work with you, reach out to me, let's try and get some people up to Boise and do the same thing that we did. You know, maybe, uh, we can do some training, and then we'll go up to the hill, and I'll have some appointments set. And, uh, we'll see what we can do, you know? And you're, you know, talking about natives, I think that hits every single part, every region of Idaho, all of us. So, you know, just get them out there, and they listen as well as we do. So, I'll keep in touch, I've got your list, you guys signed in, right? So, uh, we know who is here, and, and then those who signed up and didn't make it, we'll reach out to them as well. They, they got halfway there, so, um, so good, yeah, I look forward to work with you guys. What else? So is this something you guys, so anyone who's a Panacac, you know, under the Panacac umbrella, you know, we get a lot of, there's a lot of scholarship opportunities. Go to the conference, conference this year's in Phoenix, and there's a water slide and all kinds of stuff there, right?
We both got scholarships.
We got scholarships.
We're going down to Phoenix.
Everyone who applied for a scholarship got one of some sort. Maybe the full scholarship, did you guys get full?
We both got full.
Maybe just the conference fee, but, uh, it's gonna be great because it's triple conference this year. WACAC, which is California, Nevada, Rocky Mountain, NACAC is going to be there, NACAC is going to be there. It's gonna be a great time for networking. I'm doing a presentation on recruiting non-traditional uneducated students, so I'm looking forward to that, you know? Um, but hopefully you guys can make it to Advocacy Day. Apply for the scholarship, apply for the scholarship to go to Guiding the Way to Inclusion, the SEM, you know? Panacac, you know, will pay for you guys to go to some of these great places. And I know that NACAC usually isn't the best time of year in September. You know, you guys are, are working pretty hard, but, uh, you know, make some time to go down. It's, and then Panacac is a little bit easier, usually it's Spokane, Boise, you know, St. Mary's, something like that. So let's get you guys on board with that. What else? Okay?